Good evening. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Needham. I want to tell everybody who's in attendance and on TV, watching on TV, that we are recording this hearing. So be aware that everything you say is being recorded and broadcast on cable television. So first on our agenda is the minutes from the August 15th meeting. If the board has reviewed the minutes and approved, can I entertain a... I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Our only hearing for the evening is an application of Sabre construction LLC at 37 Mosley Avenue, and they've applied for a variance pursuant to Section 7.3, general law, chapter 48, Section 10, and they're seeking relief from the provisions of 4.23 and other applicable sections of the bylaw to permit the demolition of a deteriorated, single-family residence with a detached garage and shed and to allow a construction of a new single-family residential dwelling with a side setback of 13.8 feet where 25 feet are required and a front yard setback of 20 feet where 30 feet are required. The lot in question contains 35,726 feet, less than the 43,565 square feet in the zoning district, which is the single-residence zoning district. Could you please introduce yourself for the record and who is with you tonight?
Okay. My name is George Jenta Jr. I'm the attorney representing the applicant, and with me this evening is Daniel Deichman, who's basically the part of the entity that is the applicant. All right. So as indicated, this is an application for property at 37 Mosley Avenue. If, I'm not sure, I hope the board members had a chance to maybe go out there and drive by the site. It's a sort of a, it's an odd street. It's a small little road that goes off of Charles River Street, and it's in the single Residence A, where the acre zoning district, but notwithstanding that, going down the street, you wouldn't exactly realize that because this street is developed with lots that are generally smaller than acre, and the houses are a little bit closer to the sidelines and street line than you would normally found in the acre zone. So the property is identified as parcel 60 on assessor's map 213. As indicated, it's got 35,726 square feet, so it's about 0.85 acre, which is less than the required acre for the zoning district. It is 215 feet of frontage on Mosley Avenue, so it does have conforming frontage. It's currently occupied by a one-story wood dwelling and a detached garage. The dwelling was built approximately 1922 or 1926. The assessor's records say 22. The building department records say 26. Either way, at that time, of course, there were no setback requirements. In fact, in fact, we didn't have a bylaw until 1925. The existing structure is currently in very poor condition. In fact, the assessors assessed it and categorized it as a deminus, which this is actually the first zoning case I've handled where an existing house came in at that low of a grade. It is valued at 52,400, which gives you an idea also of the condition of the house.
George, is anybody living in there?
No, no, it's currently vacant. Approximately two-thirds of the property are covered by wetlands, and the remainder of the property is entirely within the applicable wetlands buffer zone. The existing house and the land is all subject to flooding. As noted, there was a photo that was submitted with the memo that shows scanning water in the basement. The lot has a little bit of an unusual shape. It's not the most unusual, but it's certainly not a typical shape, and as indicated, because the land is subject to flooding and the wetlands condition, it has a soil condition that qualifies under the variance law. Because of the location of the wetlands, the amount of wetlands, the shape of the wetlands, there is only a very small portion of the lot that would be considered buildable, especially if you apply the applicable setbacks. And on the setbacks, a little note here. The existing structure is technically conforming because there are two different sets of requirements, one for existing structures on these old lots, and another one for new construction. The minute you demolish more than 50% of the envelope of the existing structure, it is treated as new construction, and you now have to comply with new, different set of requirements. As a result, this is why we weren't able to come in as a special permit. We had to come in under variance, very much, and in fact, there's a lot of striking similarities in this situation to the situation that the board dealt with back in December of '23 at 320 Grove Street. All right. So I do have, just for illustration purposes, this is the same information that's contained within the memo that was submitted. That's not written down, please.
That's an eight-by-eleven of an oversized one you submitted.
So, well, this is, I just colored it in just to make it a little bit easier to be able to, to be able to visualize. So you can see that sort of light pink or salmon-colored little blotch there, right? That's the extent of what you could build on, on this lot. That is outside the 25-foot no-touch buffer zone, right, and outside the 25-foot sideyard and outside the 30-foot front yard. And let me just backtrack a little bit and talk about, you know, I think all the board members are familiar with the wetlands regulations in that 100 feet from the wetlands line is regulated and controlled by the Conservation Commission. Under that, the first 25 feet is essentially a no-touch, no-disturb. You can't do barely anything in the first 25 feet. The next 25 feet, you can do a bit more, but you're still not supposed to do a whole lot, and it's really the last 50 feet that is the sort of, the most lenient or the area where you can generally have the most flexibility. So in this case, if you go from the 25-foot no-touch, the area that's sort of bounded by the setbacks in that, you wind up with a really small part of the lot. It's about, just a tick over 22 feet wide by 76 feet deep. That is less than 5% of the total lot. That is the only part of the lot that you could build on under applicable regulations and end zoning requirements. And that means, when I say build on it, that's not just the house. That's your house and your infiltration system and basically anything that you have to do as a part of the house. So with that as the backdrop, that is why we are here before you this evening, because with that as a, that is the small area that you could do something in the lot, there is a need to have a bit more leniency or a variation from the applicable setbacks under the bylaw. So we have requested, as a part of the house design, a variation to go from the applicable 25-foot sideyard setback down to 13.8 feet and from the applicable 30-foot front yard setback down to, it's really 20.6 feet. Now, those, the proposed setbacks, the proposed reduced setbacks, while they are different than the SRA zone, these are actually consistent with the SRB zone. In the SRB zone, of course, it's a 14-foot sideyard setback and a 20-foot yard front setback. I note that because, as I indicated at the outset, this neighborhood, even though it's in the SRA zone, is not a typical acre-lot development. This zone, this street is developed sort of almost like SRB Lite. So there's nine lots on the street, and out of the nine lots, only two have the minimum acre or more. Seven of them do not have the acre, and in fact, one of them is substantially less than 10,000 square feet. So the idea of reducing the setbacks down to the 13.8 feet on the side and 20 feet in the front is consistent with sort of the way that the neighborhood has been designed. Before coming to the board, the applicant went to the Conservation Commission and did receive an order of conditions to build the house essentially in this location. The house that's proposed is substantially consistent with what was approved by Conservation, the one difference being the very front of the house, which is outside the 25-foot zone, is forward about five feet. So there's about five feet difference between this house and what Conservation...
So you'll have to go back to...
So you'll have to go back to Conservation, yes.
And their comments is you would have to amend your...
Yes, yes.
And what's the timeframe on that?
Well, basically, if we got favorable action from this board, that right after the vote, we'd probably schedule it, make the application...
And why didn't you go back since you withdrew a march to modify this?
So we didn't go back because at this point, we figured, let's get this piece done. The additional relief or the amendment that we would have to do with Conservation is less intensive than the original filing. So as I just mentioned, the area that's different in the house is outside the 25-foot no-touch zone, so it's in an area where there's a little bit more discretion. And so the expectation is that it, even though we have to go back through Conservation to amend, we're not amending the most critical part, the most sensitive part of the application. So in terms of, you know, what's the more of an issue, I think getting the variance at this juncture is more of the issue than doing that amendment, because in the event that the board does not act favorably, then, you know, there's no point in going to Conservation, but if the board does act favorably, that's not anticipated to be a significant hearing. All right. So I do want to point out a couple of other things with respect to the proposed house. You know, if this were, if this lot were in the single-residence B district, you'd be able to do a massive house on it, way bigger than what this little buildable area is. So even the house as proposed, which has a first-floor area of 1,275 square feet, is a relative modest house compared to both the B district and to the A district. Unfortunately, because of the need for the relief on the side, it seems a bit more than it is. If we didn't need relief on the side strictly because of the wetlands, this would appear to be a small house on a big lot. But because we need relief from the setback, obviously, you know, anything more than what's there now is a substantive change, because what's there now is a pretty small, beat-up old house.
George, I'm sorry. What's this square footage of the proposed new house?
So the first floor, basically the footprint of the first-floor living space is 1,275 square feet, and then behind that, there is a two-car garage that's an additional 491 square feet. But in terms of first-floor footprint for living area, it's only 1,275 square feet.
So the total is 3,041 square feet of livable space. It's less.
Well, that's for second and attic.
Oh, what's the second floor?
But in terms of...
So try to get the totals of the square footage of the house. So first is 1,275, the other one is 491, and what's the second floor?
First and second aggregate is 3,041 without the attic.
And with the attic?
My math isn't that good.
Okay, okay. So it's not a small house, 3,000 square feet. It's a decent-sized house.
Yeah. It's decent, but it's certainly is small compared to what a lot of the new construction is on even 10,000-square-foot lots.
So what about the adjoining houses? You keep mentioning that they're also abutting close to the property lines. How big are those other houses?
So if you look in the memo that I provided, there was a snippet from the assessor's map, and that gives you a good flavor of the, of what the neighborhood is, and you can see from that basically kind of how the neighborhood's been laid out and developed.
What page is this?
So it's one of the, it's the very first exhibit. So it's Exhibit A. And you can actually, so if you look at that, right, you can see the house is on Mosley, and then just as an example, and then take a look at 149 Charles River, right, the size of that house, the size of that lot, and the relationship of that house to the lot, and the same thing with 157 next door. You know, Mosley is sort of different, it's a different street than the SRA zone.
On the two-acre lots you reference, on your Exhibit A, where are those and what's the size of the houses on those lots?
So that's number 29 and number 32. They're right across the street from each other.
Yep.
I don't have the actual size of the house, but you can sort of see just, you know, by eyeballing the footprints. So you can see that number 29 is probably about the same size as this house, as the house we're talking about right now, and 32 is a bit bigger than that. So in the end, basically, this is a lot that is subject to an unusual soil condition and an unusual shape, and directly because of the, really because of the soil condition, there is an undue burden and a hardship to use and develop the lot, and therefore, we feel that there is justification for the granting of a variance. Again, very much like 320 Grove Street, in that case, you know, it was, it was, they had a bit more of an unusual-shaped lot, but it was wetlands conditions that primarily were driving the issue. They had a house that was subject to flooding. They had to run a sump pump basically all the time to avoid flooding.
Do you have a copy of 320 Grove's decision?
I do. And anyway, and they sought relief, they only had to go for the sideyard setbacks because it was such a deep lot. And in that case, the board authorized a sideyard setback on one side of 17 and 1/2 feet and on the other side of 15.3 feet.
So the question that will always come up, and we're going to hear from the neighborhood and anyone else who submitted testimony, is variance is significant relief. You absolutely have to establish the hardship under the statute, obviously, but you, can you, in your plans, minimize what you're trying to do. So you come in with an application, you bought a piece of property, it's not the homeowner, you bought the property presumably knowing what the conditions of this property is, so there's a business issue versus a homeowner stuck with something. Have you considered, are you willing to consider reduction of what you're trying to do to bring the variance down more controllable? Because one of the things we'll discuss at some point is, have you spoken to the neighbors? Have you sat down with them? Have you discussed their needs and their feelings of what they want? Obviously, some neighborhoods don't want any change, and we balance those things, but sometimes we suggest that you speak to neighborhood. Not saying that the variance will be granted or rejected, I'm just saying that's always prudent. Talk to me about, you've come in for an application, how rigid is this, that you can't do anything without these, this relief?
So I will defer to my client, but I will say in general, my perspective is, you know, there is typically, even if it's small things, there's usually some things you can do, but you have to sometimes get into it and have the back and forth once you're into it to really get to that. So, but I will defer to my client as to if this is hard and fast or if there's, you know, 20% flexibility or...
I'm not asking you to make a determination, I'm just understanding the rigidity. If you're saying, "We can't economically do anything with this house unless we get this relief per se because of the restrictions," then tell us that. If there is flexibility, let us know that, and then we're going to listen to the...
I will say at a bare minimum, some relief will be required, just because that buildable envelope is so small and so narrow, really some relief is going to be necessary. I think the question would be, is it, does it have to be, you know, the 15 feet that's requested, or is there somewhere between 15 feet and 25 feet that works?
Correct. So I assume everybody has driven by, we've seen the property, we see the situation on the ground. So anything else, and then I can...
I think that, for now, that I'll leave it at that.
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
I've heard from the applicant.
He's the lawyer. I mean, he was about, he was introducing the applicant to say a few words. I'd like to hear, you know, your perspective on this project and a little bit about the history, how you got involved with the project.
So we bought the project back in November of 2022, and of course, it's for a profit development. Without the relief being granted with the variances, it will make it extremely difficult to build anything there almost, due to the fact that the pre-existing home is already within the areas of those setbacks that we're trying to mitigate right now, and then also the garage structure is basically even closer to the setbacks where it is currently. We're trying to alleviate some of that by moving it over closer to where the rest of the house will be. Also, without variance relief, it will be incredibly difficult for us to even have a driveway going back there, which will greatly limit occupancy. So there's both the functional as well as the financial aspect of it, of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. Just so I don't forget, I'm going to read into the record some municipal department comments, and we have residents' comments. So first of all, the building inspector, commissioner sent his comments, and he has no objection to the proposal at this point. Public health provided their normal public health requirements for all construction and basically had no other comments. Excuse me. What? Let me continue. Then we have the conservation, director of conservation submitted their comments in that you'll have to come back for an amendment for any changes from what was approved. The fire department had no issues. The police department had no issues. The Department of Public Works provided their normal stormwater management. That was their letter of 9/11. And obviously, they've referred back to the conservation order of conditions as well. So you have the requirements of the Department of Public Works. We received an email from Leslie Smith Jacobs and Nancy Smith. Are you here tonight? So they have written comments, and it's in somewhat detail, so I think it would be appropriate for you to present it to the board when I call on you. And that looks like it for comments from people and municipal departments. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. There's a microphone here, so if you would come up to the chair, introduce yourself, where you reside, and speak into the microphone, not for the purpose of us hearing, but for cable television. So...
Do you want us one at a time?
One at a time, yeah.
I reside at 29 Mosley Avenue, the abutting property on the side which, for which a variance is being requested. I, this is not my full-time job, although it feels like it has been lately, and I have been trying to educate myself going through the conservation process and now this, so forgive my ignorance if I misspeak about things, I tried my best.
Relax and just tell us what you thought so.
I strongly oppose the issuance of a variance to Daniel Deichman and Sabre Construction to decrease two setbacks on the property at 37 Mosley for the following reasons. I'll summarize each in the interest of time, but am prepared to explain each in greater detail if necessary. The previous owner, at their own expense, had OXPO associates evaluate 37 Mosley to delineate the vegetated wetlands under both the State and Town Wetland Protection Acts. This information was provided to Sabre builders before they purchased the property. The exact location of the 25-foot no-disturb zone, as well as the 50- and 100-foot buffer zones, were made perfectly clear. In other words, Mr. Deichman and Sabre Construction bought the property knowing full well the limitations of the land they purchased. The high-water table and potential for basement flooding is a well-known fact of life on Mosley Avenue. The previous owner specifically warned Mr. Deichman and Sabre Construction that it was imperative they maintain the existing sump pump. Further, they provided a generator for use in case of power outage. Mr. Deichman and Sabre Construction never turned on the electricity at the house, and predictably, the basement flooded. Mr. Deichman and Sabre Construction were granted by Needham Conservation Commission a generous addition to the existing foundation that were respectful of the setbacks, as they currently are. 37 Mosley is in the SRA Single Resident A zoning district. No amount of comparison of Mosley Ave's likeness to an SRB zoning district will make it so. No regard should be given to false equivalences. There are new stakes along the right side of 37 Mosley Ave that are at least four feet closer to my house than pictured on any previous surveys submitted to Conservation and to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is this indicating a different property line? It seems curious to me, given this request for a variance. Any disturbance, especially as significant as the already-approved expansion of 37 Mosley's footprint, has a negative impact on the surrounding wetlands, both on the immediate property and in the neighborhood. This impact is largely unseen and is often unnoticed immediately, but reveals itself over time. Allowing a further expansion of the footprint by issuing a variance to the established setbacks will have an exponentially larger negative impact on the wetlands in the neighborhood. In conclusion, under no circumstances should this house be any closer than the minimum setbacks. It is imperative that the zoning rules be respected. This request that will enlarge an already generous addition is nothing short of a money grab, putting profit above all else.
Thank you.
May I, I have some additional thoughts after the presentation?
Sure.
Okay. These are not as well-formed. I think, I think the major point is that the, what is there is what was there when he bought it, and everything was known, and the previous owners went out of their way to make sure that they knew. The previous owners were very protective and respectful of the wetlands, and there's a very long history of that. That basement photo that was taken with about three or four feet of water in it, I suspect having there been no rain in the last month, that I wouldn't be surprised if the basement was dry. However, the idea that the basement is unusable, as stated in the paperwork, is ridiculous. The, I contacted SERV Pro to either remove four feet of water or to restore it back to its usable condition is not, it's what they do. It's a thing. Let's see, there was something about, oh, the 3,041 square feet with the first and second floor apparently doesn't include the third floor, which was referred to as the attic space, which contains an entertainment room, a full bathroom, a wet bar, and a balcony, just for the record. So 3,041 square feet is, I don't believe, accurate. And in terms of establishing a hardship, the hardships existed, and there is a portion of the home currently in the 25-foot no-disturb zone, and they were allowed to, they are allowed to build on that foundation that is already in it. They got a special dispensation for putting some helical pilings for a deck into the 25-foot no-disturb zone. Conservation Commission gave them that, and two very generous additions along the front and the side, where they intend to put in a full basement, thereby disturbing, if my math is correct, 230 cubic yards of buffer zone. They will remove it, and now they want more. That's the problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So just one more time, your house relative to this and how close it is?
That, that is now a little bit in question. Every...
Just approximately. I'm just trying to get a sense of how close the houses are.
I don't think I'm very good at that.
Is it five feet, 10 feet? I mean, you know, where's your house relative to this new one, in the property line?
I don't...
You live next door?
I live next door.
Okay.
Our driveways are next to each other, there's a row of bushes, and until I saw these stakes that went in last week or the week before, I owned four feet more than these stakes are now showing, so that's a little...
So maybe a value dispute.
So rather than wait to the end of the hearing, I just want to ask you, under any circumstances, if the developer came in with reductions in what they were looking for, are you amenable to that discussion, or are you rigid, there can't be any variation from the bylaw?
I would say that I am amenable to the very generous addition that the Conservation Commission already gave them. Not one inch... Commission already gave them. Not one inch more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm less technical than Nancy. So my name is Barb Cataldo, and I live at 24 Mosley Ave, across the street, more or less diagonally across. There is a, a buffer of trees in front of the property, I'm well aware. But I listened to one thing that one of you said tonight, and I thought it was really interesting, and the remark of, in terms of rigidity versus flexibility, has anybody talked to the neighbors? The answer is no. We live in a small, tight-knit community, seven houses. I think that it was mentioned, there's 10 properties. There's 10 properties on the street. I don't know what 10 properties there are, because the assessor's database only has nine. I can't find anybody that has 10,000 square feet. And maybe that it's there, and it's not correct in the assessor's database, but I live in a world of trust and transparency. I work in a school district with 3,700 children I worry about in another town, but parents always are saying, trust and transparency. So what does that have to do with building? Well, first of all, I've lived in this town almost 60 years. I've seen change. Do I like change?
Yeah.
Sometimes yes, sometimes no. I miss Bergson's ice cream, but I understand other things have come along. So I'm all about trust and transparency. And while I am not against a house going in there, I am against the fact that if you don't follow the rules that are in place and the processes that are in place, you erode the trust and transparency. So the Conservation Committee had told us that we'd all be getting letters by certified mail originally. Somebody stuffed a mail, a letter in our mailbox, and somebody else didn't get a letter. Nothing was done in the appropriate way. It was very haphazard showing up at the Conservation Committee. Do we keep the trees? Do we not keep the trees? It's been so long that that property has sat unattended. It's no doubt that some of those trees that they've asked us to save might not be able to be saved, because everything's unattended. So thinking about the fact that the property was purchased, it's dragged out, unattended basement, if it, the foundation has eroded, it's because of the lack of attention. There was never any need for that. Mr. Smith cared for that house like there was no tomorrow. It was his baby. And so as a result, it was dry-bone, shutting off the system so it would flood. To me, if you can't follow the small rules, you're not going to follow the big ones. And so when we hear about a variance, I can't trust that that variance, even if you say yes, go build, I can't trust the trees the Conservation Committee said don't touch, won't be touched at this point. I can't trust that the house will not be the size that they say it's going to be. And if it's an average size, it's the same size as my house. And my house has 11 rooms, and it had nine people living in it, and it was still big. So I don't want to say that that's an average house. Yep, the houses they're building in Needham now are 10,000 square feet. This is not, but this is not an entry-level house either. This is a house for a well-established family. And while we're hunting for houses in town that people can live in and move in, new young families, this is not going to be that house. I am really opposed to the variance, because they haven't played by the rules so far. They're not following the processes. And I feel that the drag-out now really caused a lot of damage on the foundation. I don't know if it's repairable. I'm not in contracts. I'm not in building. I teach kids how to read, and I'm really proud of that. I don't know about the other, but I really do know there's no trust and transparency right now, because all these months and all these years, no one's knocked on my door, and I've been outside on the lawn when they've come, and they've gone, and they've come, and they've gone. No one's ever stopped to say hello. No one's ever stopped to say, what do you think? And so for that reason, based on that one comment one of you made, I don't remember which one, but that reason alone says to me, they're not really interested in what the neighbors think. They're interested in doing their building. They're interested in making sure they make their profit margin, just like that article in The Globe talked about, particularly in Needham. And yet, we know, even if it's not a massive profit margin, a much smaller house could be built. A family who could really want to move to Needham, who could afford a much smaller house, would have that advantage. But if you're into making a big profit margin, that will never happen. So trust and transparency doesn't exist. Will this get built? I don't know. Am I completely rigid? Absolutely not. Time has to move on. But I am really concerned that the process hasn't been followed and clean all along. So why will they start now?
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the public?
I'm Leslie Smith Jacobs. The property in question was owned by my parents for over 70 years. And the last couple of years before my father passed in the house, I was there four, five, six times a week, along with my brother, taking care of him in hospice. I found out about what was going on from Nancy, who was our next-door neighbor, because she was very concerned about how things were being handled, and questioning some of the condition of the house. I'm gonna say right off the hand, we knew whoever bought the property would have to start from the ground up. There was no question of that. But...
Can you say that one more time?
We knew that the house was in bad condition, in that it would need a new heating system, wiring, roof, all those things.
How about the basement? Was there flooding in the basement?
No, there was not. And I did write a letter to the committee about a number of things that were said. It also said we were on a septic system. That was not true. The whole street was on public, let me just, I don't want to, I'll just go into the letter that I wrote. "I became aware of several discrepancies being put on record concerning the property located at 37 Mosley Avenue circa 1922, which I would like to clarify to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Conservation Commission. My parents, Harold W. and Mildred E. Smith, were the owners of the property since 1950, until it was sold in 2022. I was born in 1952 and lived there until 1976. Since that time, I've been intimately involved with my brother, James Smith, with assisting my parents with work on the property. I was their caretaker in their latter years, and at the, and at the property several times a week, until my father passed away in June of 2020, and my mother most recently in January of 2024. The house and property are located in a wetlands area, which was exasperated in the 60s by construction going on above us in Stratford Road, which changed the route of water coming down onto our property in the neighborhood. We have an active stream bordering the left side of the property, which captured most of the runoff, but some still pooled in our backwoods. We would clear the brook every year to make sure the water would flow out toward the town forest, which bordered with our back property line. Our small backyard bordered on a vernal pool filled with skunk cabbage and other plants and blooms, moss associated with wetlands. The woods were filled with snakes, pollywogs, frogs, salamanders, as well as pheasants, turkeys, quail, ducks, foxes, deer, beavers, skunks, and raccoons. It was a great place to grow up, I will say. Our street was a private road, and initially, everyone had a septic system, and installed some pumps in their basements for the excess water table, especially in the spring. That water would be pumped into the farthest part of our backyards, or streams, or culverts, if available. The town of Needham installed a sewer line on our street in 1974. All neighbors voluntarily hooked up to the system between '74 and '76. My parents' house was hooked up to the line in July of 1976. We all ceased to use our septic systems, although, though they still remained underground on our properties. The town of Needham installed a sewer line, I'm sorry. My parents' basement was L-shaped, with concrete walls and floor. The majority of it was set up as my father's work and tool room with storage shelves. The other side housed the oil tank, oil burner, water heater, wood stove, washing machine, and dryer. The sump pump was located under the side laundry sorting table, next to the washer and backyard bulkhead. My parents also dug up the floor and set up drainage pipes and gravel before re-cementing the floor. The pipe they installed flowed into the sump pump pit, where they would then drain out into the sewer system. The sump pump ran primarily on electricity, but also had a backup generator located in the base, in the garage. The basement was dry and warm. After my father passed away, my mother decided to sell the property in October of 2022. She realized that the house was out of code and needed major renovation of the electrical heating and structure. It was put on the market as a knocked-down and secluded wetlands area. My mother hired OXPO associates to do a wetland study of the property for any future prospects. Unfortunately, the study was not done in the spring, when flooding and wetlands were even closer to the house. She felt they should know what the buildable parameters for the property and the protection of the trees and vegetation. That study was provided and attached to this email. And then...
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
When you went to sell the property?
Mm-hmm.
Was that study provided to the buyer?
Yes, and it was published in the newspaper. It was in, it was in, under the real estate company. It had the description, and that was attached to, to it.
Thank you.
And also, it was given to them again when they decided to purchase.
What were the date of your comments? Was this the original Conservation Commission in hearing?
This was written, let's see, I sent this April 18th of 2024.
Okay, so that was the original hearing?
Correct.
So if we could, for the record, have that letter brought back into the file for this hearing?
But just, the only thing, I do have other statements here. I'm gonna have to read the whole thing if you don't want.
Okay, that's all right.
But what I will say is that at the sale of the home, it was made quite clear to them, or suggested to them, that the sump pump needed to be kept going, so that we were planning to turn off the electrical service, so they needed to, you know, get their own, which they never did. In fact, I called up EverSource, I mean National Grid, to talk with them anyways, just to make sure our last bill was paid. And I asked or inquired if another service had put it, put in there, and they said no. And they said, generally, when we shut off our service, they leave it on for three more days to give someone time to do that. And it was not done. We also, and we also had kept a generator out in the garage, which my father would use if they lost power. So they had that option too. We still had oil in the oil tank, and they were aware of that. And that's probably still sitting in the oil tank now. And it's been how long? Been a long time. There are probably one or two, the furnace is an original furnace from the house, and it's covered with asbestos. That's been partially underwater, too. But when this house was sold, we were using that basement. We used that basement our whole lives. And I know Nancy did remark, everyone on the street has sump pumps in their basements. And I think out of the eight or nine houses on the street, there's only two that aren't, don't have them finished off as regular rooms. And my father just kept his, with all his tools and all his little projects he was working on. He was an engineer.
Your father had his tool shop in the basement?
Yeah. Well, he took up as much of it as my mother would let him, which is a lot, I mean, down in the basement there right now, there's a light.
Are there, are there windows in the basement?
Yes.
Do you recall how many, approximately, three, four, five?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, significant. Okay, good. Thank you. It's very helpful.
Yeah.
So the background was very helpful?
Pardon?
Your background was very helpful.
Well, yes. I mean, that's one thing I was upset about. I mean, I knew that, you know, he, if any of us children wanted a house, he would have given it to us. But we were all so old. We are at our own houses at that point. So it was one of those. But every single person in the street uses a basement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the neighborhood want to speak? Because we're still gonna go up to Zoom people, too.
Are there people in Zoom?
We don't know. We'll find out.
Hi, I'm Peter Kerr. I live at 42 Mosley, directly across the street from the proposed construction. I don't have any prepared statements, but we have all been attending all of the Conservation Committee hearings on this for, I think it was eight or 10 sessions altogether. So there are many variations of what the builder wanted to do. Can we do this? Can we do that? Change back and forth. And I thought we had had an agreement that was billable. But now that they need a variance, somehow they need another, what, 10 feet in this direction, and 10, five or 10 feet in that direction. I don't really agree with the statement that this is a tremendous hardship. If you can't build a house, it's at least 3,000 or 4,000 square feet. I mean, I grew up in a house that was maybe 1,000 square feet with four siblings. So...
The hardship standard we're talking about is a little different. It's the topography, the shape of the land, the soil condition, is the requirement for this extraordinary relief called the variance.
Right.
But you, you said something that was interesting to me, sort of a plan that you agreed to, or the neighbors...
Or that the, that was the final version that the Conservation Committee had, had signed off on.
And how about your feeling? You live across the street, because, let's just play it out. The variance is not allowed. The developer is not allowed to, to proceed with this plan. The house just sits there until someone else can, can afford it.
It's been, and I saw, I moved into our house 24 years ago, and the previous owner was elderly and a little ornery, and didn't really want to spend money on repairs to the house. So it's, it's pretty much in the same state it was when I moved in.
And getting worse?
Um, whether it's taking its toll, for sure. But, yeah. So I would, I would love to see a newer house built, and maybe a, a, a small family be able to move in and get a, a place to live in our neighborhood. That would be great. I, I just, I don't agree with the approach that we have to try to maximize the square footage of every house that's built.
So, so let me focus on, on something I said to a few of the residents who raised the issue. Flexibility, a need for a discussion. But I understand the past, maybe there hasn't been a dialogue. Is that something you're willing to discuss? Because if you have an entire neighborhood who's adamant that there can be no variance, no change, no modification, you take that into account as well, and try to balance things. So what's your thought on that, since you live right across the street from this house?
I live right across the street. I mean, I understand there's a lot of challenges in building anything there. You can't really touch most of the foundation, because it's in the 25-foot zone. If there needs to be some variance, I might, I might be agreeable to that. I have to kind of see what it is, and how much it is. I think that the variance they're asking, especially on the front, where they're going from, I think it was 25 feet to, to 10 feet.
The front, the 30, that's 20.6 feet, I believe. And 30 is required. But no, listen, we certainly hear what you're saying.
That's just the numbers, but...
Yeah. And you live right across the street, and we appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before, you can come up, but before we did, I just wanted to read in the record that the email letter cement, submitted by Nancy Smith, was signed off by a number of residents, and I'll just read their names into the record. Luisa Cagna, Susan and Hector Fonseca, Barbara and Richard Cataldo, Nancy Smith, Kathleen and Robert Kemmler, Anna and G., Anna G. and Peter Kerr, and Pam Greenfield. So that submission was from everybody listed.
I'm the other neighbor on the side. But...
You are the...
My name is James Hennessy, and I live at 41 Stratford Road. So the side boundary... So the side boundary of this lot 60, I believe, is my back boundary.
Are you 42 on this map?
I'm 41, 58.
It's not on our map, Howard.
And I haven't seen any of these plot maps.
So what number Stratford are you, sir?
We're at 58, and this is 60, right?
You're number 41 Stratford, sir?
41 Stratford, that's correct.
And you're parcel 58.
We are parcel 58.
This is Lucas.
It's right here, he's got it, okay. Thanks.
And really, all I have is a question. Unfortunately, I was talking to the ladies, may have disturbed a little bit, but apparently the setback is on that lady's side yard, and it's probably not on my back border. I was just concerned, since we received no information except for the announcement of the meeting, that perhaps the plan was to take down the stone wall and move into this and that. I'm feeling better now, now that I've heard the discussion, it's just that I didn't know, and so we felt obligated to show up so we'd understand what was going on.
Sure.
But we are the other side boundary, and we're sitting up on Stratford Road. Unfortunately, we apparently changed the flow of water to make, to make more of a wetland down below, but...
So are you in favor or against this project?
I don't know that I actually have an opinion, since it doesn't really have too much to do with me at all, and if my, my parcel is not in any way involved, I'm just here for information purposes.
I'm glad you got it in the audience. Thank you. Anybody else?
Is it possible to add a comment?
You can add a comment, sure.
Nancy Smith, 29 Mosley. I just wanted to explain, maybe because I'm a visual learner, my rigidity in not one more inch than was granted by conservation. The red portion is the existing home and garage. The blue is what was granted by, the blue and the orange is the deck, was granted by conservation. So that's where I draw the line. What they want with this is the green. So that's a fairly significant change.
That diagram is very helpful. Could you submit a copy of that?
I'd be happy to.
That's a great diagram. Thank you, that's very, very helpful.
Why don't you put that to me, and I'll do the record and get it to the board members?
Thank you, that was helpful. Daphne, can you see if there's anyone in the Zoom room?
Any raised hands in attending? There are no raised hands at this moment.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Junta, you've heard the neighborhood. I think there's a lot of opposition to the grant of the variance. There's some rigidity, there's some flexibility, there's some indifference, and I asked a question of where you guys were, and we can close the public hearing and deliberate, or you can tell me what you'd like to do.
Well, to start with, I do want to make a clarification, or make sure that everybody's on the same page, because what I've just heard indicates to me that maybe we're not on the same page. With respect to the house that's before you for proposal tonight, as far as side to side, it's within two tenths of what was approved by conservation. Basically, the only change from what was approved by conservation is the very front of the house being pushed forward a few feet. So the house design that Conservation approved, it had, it had a 25-foot front setback as opposed to the 20.6 that's been requested.
So what you're saying is the residents who were somewhat comfortable with the Conservation Commission approval, it's exactly what this, except the front, is the same?
No. Almost. So, so there is a little bit of a difference. The Conservation Commission setback on the right side was 15 feet, right? As opposed to, we have asked for 13.8, so it's a 1.2-foot difference. But I think that's from the house being slid over a little bit further away from the 25-foot line.
Closer to the butter.
Exactly. Now, and I will say, you know...
So George, you answered a question, so it seems to me that the devil's in the details, and that the butter had, Nancy had a nice plan, that, that seems to me is very important to this board's understanding, but I will say that what is being proposed tonight appears, how should I say this, inflammatory to the neighbors. And so I think the chairman's suggestion is a good one, and I agree with them, that the house probably, I think even the former owner said it's in disrepair, so I think it's in everyone's best interest to have it rebuilt. But there is a difference, so I do think that a, from my hearing, take a breather tonight, and come back at this and have a more substantive engagement with the neighbors can only help everybody.
I would tend to agree with that, and if that's where I'm intending to wind up, but I have a few points before I get there. So I do want to explain some of, I think, why we end up with this inflammatory situation, and it's a good word choice there. So, and just maybe more for the benefit of the neighborhood, because I think the board will, will get this right off the bat. When the applicant went before Conservation, whether the setback be 15-foot or 13.2-foot, either way, they were going to have to come before this board for a variance as a separate after-the-fact proceeding. So even if they were to do exactly the same footprint that Conservation approved, they would still need the exact form of relief that we've requested. The specific numbers might be a little bit different, but within, you know, within some approximation. So I do want to make that clear, because I think that the neighborhood may be of the impression that this is an attempt to expand and try and get more, and it's not really. There is some discrepancies, which I'm actually going to explain in a moment, or some of that I'll explain, but this is a normal part of the process, that is a necessary part of the process, even to do exactly what Conservation approved. Now, going back to why do we have this discrepancies and so on, the house design that Conservation approved unfortunately had issues with respect to the height provisions of the bylaw. So while it was all well and good that Conservation approved it, when it came time for the first filing with this board, we ran into an issue with the building inspector. The architect on the project had a different interpretation of the bylaw and the height-related provisions of the bylaw than the building commissioner, so we had some back and forth on that. There was a revision, still there was some disagreement between the two parties, so then that's when we withdrew the initial application, did yet a third redesign to meet the height issues, to satisfy the height issues. And in the midst of all that, the general dimensions of the house have stayed the same. If you actually compare the dimensions on the conservation plan with the dimensions on the plans before you this evening, the house size, other than the front, is still the same. So it's fundamentally, well, for all intents and purposes, pretty much the same house. But it has gone through revisions and slid a little bit on the lot, so it might be a little bit different than exactly what Conservation approved. So, to your point, I think it would make sense to take a pause, for us to go back, maybe see if we can match exactly what Conservation approved, because I did seem to hear, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I did seem to hear there was some support for what Conservation approved, and then match to that, we'll have to redesign the house again, and maybe then circulate it and have some follow-up with the neighborhood.
What was the issue? Hi, George.
So, so...
How many inches were you talking about?
As you, as you know, it's, well, it's this whole thing, you know, our bylaw has this odd way of defining story, right? It used to be, it was somewhat simple back in the day, that it was a sloping roof where the full-length rafters rested on the ceiling of the floor below. Originally, you couldn't even do a dormer in the half-story above the second floor, because that definition precluded that, because the minute you cut the rafter to put a dormer in, you now didn't have a half-story, you had a story under the bylaw. That was changed in the 90s, it was tinkered with again, it was tinkered with again, it was tinkered with again, so it had to do with the provisions that define what a story is, and the architect read them a certain way, the building commissioner reads them a different way, and that took a little bit to get on the same page.
But as a result, the house got shrunk in height by how many inches?
Well, it didn't actually shrink in height. The roof, the very top of the house, the distance from the top of the house has always remained about 35 feet, which is what the bylaw provides for. It's more the configuration and sort of the dormers. The very first design had, had a, you know, basically had a roof that kind of came up, angled, and then angled again, and under the bylaw, you really, that's considered a story. So they couldn't do that. Then the architect changed it and did a form of a roof that, a sloping roof that had dormers, but that still didn't comply. So then we wound up with the design we have now, which the building commissioners approved and basically said, yes, that, that meets the requirement, that is a half-story and not a full-story. So, yeah. So that was basically, but, but in doing the redesign for all that, of course, it meant that other parts of the house had to get, you know, changed slightly and so on. But we did stay pretty much within, you know, the width, in terms of the width, because we are hemmed in, and we really can't do much on that anyways. But, but so I think, yeah, so I think the thing to do would be to continue it over and...
So a couple, couple comments. I refresh my memory of the variance granted on Grove Street. I think there was a significant distinction in that there was a building commissioner who gave the applicant homeowner a different opinion, and that homeowner relied upon that, and there was some components of that. And it was rather not a commercial person coming in, knowing what they were buying, and then trying to get something done, so I think that's also the appearance of it. The variance is very hard standard, we've granted several, but this is an issue. So I want to be clear, you have a huge hurdle to come up with. One of the things in this decision is all the butters and neighbors were supportive of it. So if you can't get the neighborhood in line, you got a strike against you, then we look at, have you met the standards for the hardship? And hardship, again, is not financial hardship, it's the land, the soil. And the question is, can you build something else on there, staying within the context of the bylaw, or minimizing the degree of the variance from the bylaw? So that's really where I'm looking at these things. So entertain a motion to extend this. Now, I'm not here at the October hearing, so one of the other board members will be there. If you want to continue it to October, that's fine, otherwise it'll be November 21st. Howard will chair the October hearing unless I have to come up. So October?
Yes, please.
So can I entertain a motion?
Second? Second.
All right, so it'll be extended, continue to 7:30 at the October hearing, and the date of the October hearing is?
It is the 7th, October 17th.
So during the month, I strongly urge the applicant, council, and the neighborhood to sit down and have a dialogue, talk, and see if there's something that the neighborhood would be comfortable with, and that the developer would be with, and then you'll come back here. So if I'm here, I'll see you then, because you never know who's not available. And at this point, anything else before the board? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Johnson, could you give me the...
Yes.
And I'm going to make copies.
So, and would you also give that to George, so he knows this was...
I didn't steal your fat, these are all mine.
Oh, you, there's some must I know that.
No, there isn't.
I bet you anything there's two chief comments, you have two chief comments and two... It's my fault, because I was encroaching in your space.
No, I told you to with you before.
That was, that was a print that you're on in the laptop, but the assessments office could be...
Listen, if I don't bring technology here, Howard.
No, it's, it's good, it's great.
You have to bring the husband gloves.
What?
Yeah. There were two of them.
They all agreed to it.
Charlie, enjoy the football game tonight.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Howard. So...
So this one?
The butters, they were the same people.
Grocery, there were two people, there was... The reason I started looking up was because I looked at her, and it was the May Brown board.
So the butters approved it?
I'm looking at that case.
No, that's my son Dylan as a baby.
Okay. It hasn't been updated for a few years.
That's my screenshot, that's what I liked.
We can screenshot it.
Why do I want to see a six-foot-four guy with a mustache on? You know, as a baby.
I tell you how much time I've spent talking about using this.